So you know, and I will entertain the motion.
We have approval.
Second? I will call the roll. Commissioner Littleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Waller?
Aye.
President Fosai, that passes unanimously. Item eight.
There are no matters called up.
Item nine.
Resolution to approve the declaration of opposition to the creation of an El Paso County Syringe Exchange Program. Peggy Littleton, County Commissioner.
Thank you. I know there may or may not be people that are here to speak on this today. If you're here, you're welcome to come down and as soon as I finish reading this, give public comment. I would like to move the following: Resolution declaring opposition to the creation of an El Paso County Syringe Exchange Program. Whereas, a responsible, healthy, and well-thought-out approach to reducing drug addiction and collateral issues arising from drug abuse is a critical element protecting public health throughout El Paso County. And whereas, the theory, and it is a theory, the theory that a needle exchange program allows intravenous drug users to exchange used, dirty hypodermic needles for new needles, and that the program would reduce the spread of disease and infections. And whereas, concerned citizens recognize that providing needles can be seen as facilitating dangerous and destructive drug abuse, and could actually increase the likelihood of drug abusers progressing from drugs and forms of abuse to an even more dangerous and difficult-to-treat addiction. And whereas, better enforcement, outreach, and education, intervention, and treatment, and other preventive majors are needed all across the United States to stop the alarming increase in drug-related crimes, accidents, and deaths. And whereas, research concludes that standalone needle exchange programs are ineffective without referrals to drug treatment programs. And whereas, Colorado law gives local boards of health the discretionary authority to determine whether or not a needle exchange program is appropriate for their local jurisdictions. And whereas, members of the El Paso County Board of Health are currently considering the establishment of a needle exchange program in our community. And whereas, the establishment of any tax-supported program or initiative that could encourage or facilitate illegal drug use is unacceptable. And whereas, El Paso County Sheriff Bill Elder is adamantly opposed to a needle exchange program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of El Paso County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, oppose the establishment of any government-sponsored needle exchange program, and hereby call upon the members of the Board of El Paso County Board of Health, the leadership of the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and Colorado lawmakers to recognize that the establishment of government-sponsored syringe exchange programs is not in the best interest of Colorado citizens. Done this 30th day of November 2017 at Colorado Springs, Colorado, and is attested to by the Board of County Commissioners, signed by our President Darryl Glenn and our Clerk and Recorder Chuck Borman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll open it up for discussion. Does anybody want to kick this off? Come on down, sir. And if you could sign in too, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. This is, my name is Robert Weber. I'm a practicing infectious disease physician. I've been in Colorado Springs for 27 years, and practiced infectious disease that time in a group of six others. As a consequence of that, I see firsthand the ravages of illegal drug use and the problems that it causes in our patients. These problems include both bloodborne infections, like HIV, hepatitis C, as well as bacterial infections, which are life-threatening and often destroy heart valves, as well as soft tissue infections. And so, quite apart from the obvious problems of drug overdose, which are huge and growing at an exponential rate, we desperately need to do something to control this. Unfortunately, while no one likes this, some of these programs, such as the suggested Syringe Access Program, represent what public health officials think is the best practice for controlling this. The experts in the area, including the Colorado Department of Public Health, accept that these programs are effective, and the data that's in your resolution is factually incorrect. So I hope you'll consider, not the political ramifications of this kind of a proposal, but actually the health of our citizenry. This is one way to begin to make an impact on some of the things. We know that our health of our emergency services providers, police and fire, 66 percent reduction in needle sticks in places where these programs have been implemented, to the police and firemen. So for protection of our citizens, for education, for reducing overdoses, because we can provide people with medicine at the time they come in that can be used, Narcan, to prevent them from dying should there be an overdose. And there's also a five-fold reduction in drug use by people who are exposed to these programs. It's a harm reduction program for a bad situation, but it is about the best tool that we have presently, and I would oppose this resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Waller?
Yeah, and doctor, help me understand. You said, or at least alluded to, that you felt that we might be making a decision based on political implications. I don't see needle exchange as a partisan issue in any way, or a political issue. Help me understand why you think that's the case.
I think that's the case because people feel that their constituents think it may be unpopular, and siding with the scientific evidence that supports these programs. Thirty-five states have these programs. We have programs in multiple other cities in Colorado, all of which have been demonstrably effective. The only reason I can conclude that people would oppose it is either on some perceived ethical or moral ground that's not directed towards public health, or political.
Well, you say that it's demonstrably provable that these things are effective, yet, you know, I can tell you, use of needle-borne narcotics is up wildly in the state of Colorado and across the country. And you're telling me that has absolutely nothing to do with access to needles?
Correct.
Wow.
Why would you assume it does?
Why would we assume it doesn't? I mean, isn't there studies?
Because there's no evidence that it-
Hang on. When I'm talking, I talk. I'm not going to interrupt you. You're not going to interrupt me. Do you understand that?
Yes, I thought you asked the question. I'm sorry.
Well, I was getting there. When I'm done talking, that's when you start. But you're, you ask me, why do we assume that the increased use in illegal narcotics in the state of Colorado has anything to do with needle exchange? Shouldn't we study and understand all of these issues before we engage in some practice or behavior?
They have been studied extensively, and the data's been provided to at least some of your board, representing the best information that the Centers for Disease Control have. That's the agency that I think is most reliable and most tasked with providing that kind of information. Their conclusion is overwhelmingly in support of the programs.
I haven't, well, okay.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Well, it's an assertion, sure. And I appreciate that. I appreciate you making this assertion, but, you know, it would be nice to see, ingest, and understand the data that supports your assertion.
Well, I think that's absolutely correct, and we'd be happy to try to provide you with references and capsulated data, as well as, you know, specific facts. I just think it might be worth reviewing that prior to voting on this resolution.
Okay. Any other questions for this speaker? Because we're going to have time up here as a board to address. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Just start making your way down if you want to speak. That's okay. And if you could please sign in too, that way we can-
Absolutely. My name is Jessica Kobalinski. I am the Programs Officer for the Colorado Health Network. I just wanted to, I do actually have the CDC research in front of me, that I'm from August of 2017, which I'm more than happy to distribute if you are interested in looking at it. And just for the record, I wanted to state that the proposed program within Colorado Springs does, in fact, not only offer treatment referrals for substance abuse, it offers onsite case management services and onsite behavioral health services that includes mental health therapists that are licensed addiction counselors. I just would like for that to be on the record.
Great.
And if you would like this CDC information, or anyone in the audience, I have it for you. The information from the CDC clearly states that people who inject drugs are five times more likely to enter treatment when they are in a syringe access program. Information from the CDC. It also clearly states that prevention measures like this, in fact, saves tax dollars. The average lifetime cost of treating someone with HIV is $300,000. The cost for treating someone with hepatitis C is $75,000, sorry, $7,500,000. Cost of a syringe is $0.10. Your tax dollars are paying for it one way or the other, at this point. So, the money is in the state of Colorado. It's really up to the Board of Health if they would like to have that money utilized in this county or not. Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Gonzalez has a question for you.
Regarding the Pueblo program, do you happen to know how many people have entered the treatment program because of the needle exchange?
Entered into substance abuse treatment, or into medication-assisted treatment?
Either.
Right. So, I don't have those exact numbers. What I can tell you is the waitlists are very long to get in if you have Medicaid or no insurance. One thing that we do is, since we have social workers on staff, case managers on staff, they engage with folks every week. They say, "I would like treatment. I need treatment. I've got to wait two months, three months, six months, however long to get in." I'm required to call every week to stay on the waitlist. Touch base with the social worker every week. They call, maintain on this waitlist. Since I don't work specifically in that Pueblo program, I just hear stories back and forth, but I know there's, I don't know, quite a few folks engaged in that.
The Board of Health did provide that information. It was less than 15. I believe it's a handful of people who, over the last several years, have entered that program. So, the assertion that this is bringing people in to get, to receive, you know, either medical aid or other assistance is not, not accurate. Thank you.
Well, the main thing I wanted to talk about in your resolution was the comment of, whereas, without referrals, people don't get into treatment. I wanted to make sure that the commissioners knew that we did, in fact, have licensed substance abuse counselors onsite, ready and willing to meet with people.
And I absolutely agree that you do have those. The drug-addicted personnel going to the needle exchange are not wanting that. Thank you. Or not taking the opportunity to, to use those, at least in the Pueblo program. Thank you.
Okay. And if you wanted to leave something with the clerk, we could make sure that that's added to the official record.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Please come on up and sign in. And again, if there's people that want to speak, just start making your way down here. That way we can keep things going.
Deborah Stell-Minerger, Community Advocate, Citizen Scientist. On this, I have to wholeheartedly agree with you. From my personal contacts with peoples over the last four decades, this is not a new problem, but it has increased in El Paso County. I've been proud to call myself a resident of El Paso County because I've stayed here, when I moved here, from the Chicago area, which has its own set of problems there for decades, before I moved out here. And I figured I would escape that when I came out here. It was a fresh new start, to not see this happening. But, when my kids got into junior high, when my youngest daughter got into junior high and high school, the amount of kids that were involved in things to do with needles, because they don't start out with the needles. It progresses to that. The fact that they start out with the pill parties and the other drugs like meth, and then the meth, even with that addiction, it progresses to needles, so that they can do it without losing all the teeth in their mouth. This was the reasons that were given to me. Also, using pot and alcohol to come down from it long enough so that they don't look like meth heads. Needles are used with meth. Needles are used with heroin. Needles are used with a variety of items, unfortunately, that I don't even want to think about. But the fact is, when they have those parties, whether they're the teenagers or the adults, those needles get passed around. And the one comment I heard was the needle programs were a good way to get fresh needles, because they would only last for so long. And the other thing I had in conversations with them, that was me and them on a non-confrontational basis, my daughter's friends would tell me, neighbors would tell me who I knew had the drugs, because I would ask them, "Why are you doing this? How are you doing this?" Because I wanted to know how to protect my children. And they said, "Those needles are just a fresh supply." And they pass them around at the party, so it's not, those fresh needles are not kept to one person. They are passed around at parties, with the people who have all the diseases. And the fact that that happens so much, and that's what they depend on, and in my viewpoint, over the last four decades, 99 percent of the people who get help only get it after they've been into the emergency room or at death's door. Those are the only two scenarios. That commonality that says, only when they hit rock bottom do they go get help with those addictions. That's 99 percent of my view of the people in my communities, where I've lived in several, in El Paso County. So I have to agree with not supporting the needles program for that reason. It does not create a better, healthier environment for our drug addictions. It just perpetuates it to a new level. And that's what they count on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
My name is Bill Mead, and I am Senior Vice President for Investments at Wells Fargo Advisors. I'm also President of the Board of the Colorado Health Network, which operate several of these programs around the state. I had met with Commissioner Gonzalez in Littleton in early February, and gone over this information a little bit. And they answered some questions that they asked me about. Evidently, I didn't do a terrific job, but alls I want to say is, we've been trying to do this down here for five years. Certainly isn't something new. I know the Gazette wrote about it the first time, first go-around that we went through, and actually all the way back to where Chief Myers was the police chief here. Excuse me. This is not, our mission is not, as Commissioner Gonzalez was aiming at, our mission, our mission is not to cure drug users. Is that a byproduct of an exchange program? Yes. You know, we're going to be there. We gain their trust over time. We're going to be there when they say, "I've had enough. You know, what, can you help me?" And yes, we can. But our mission, really, is to reduce the infection rate in the community. The community, so many people in the community know drug users and don't even know they know drug users. Those people are interacting on sexual basis and just, just a common basis that, to the point that they could be infected with some of these diseases if they're evidence. So, yes, hepatitis C lasts outside the needle for quite a while. And yes, HIV lasts outside the needle. We're not aiming at doing anything other than making the environment for our community a better health environment. And so, I don't want you to think we're trying to cure all the drug users. We're not. I mean, we would like to if they're ready. And I think the last lady had a pretty good point, in spite of the fact of wanting the opposite view of me. But, a pretty good point that, it's like all the other addictions. Until you hit rock bottom, you're probably not going to seek help, or not seriously seek help. I apologize for part of my speaking. I just came from the dentist's where I had a feeling put in. I mean, numb my whole head, I mean. Anyway, you know, I want everybody to know, I've been working on this for several years, certainly not for-profit. This is not a for-profit organization. It's a nonprofit organization. I'm a volunteer as a board member. I'm not, you know, paid in any way. And it's just something that, yes, I have a passion for, and yes, I have connections over the past 20 years to this kind of an organization. But, we are really, truly, honestly, trying to increase the health of our fellow people in this community. No other agenda is there, regardless of what they may, anybody may think. Really, truly, it isn't. The research says that crime goes down, that calls go down, that drug use goes down. And, and I've given out these pamphlets on occasion. I'm certainly willing to send you the entire pamphlet associated with this. The amount of research is extraordinary. And the reason for that is, is way back when it was first, you know, you saw, as it was when it was presented to me as the President of the Board, was, this, let's do a, let's do a needle exchange program. And it's like, what, really? And, so really, the more, the people that were critics of this are the ones that demanded the research. Let's see the research, and, you know, because we don't believe it. And that how, is how this has gone across the nation. In a time of an opioid epidemic, this is not going to wipe it out. But it is going to be one step toward trying to address it.
Okay. And sir, if I could make sure you sign in?
Yeah, I didn't know if I was supposed to or not.
That's okay.
Didn't have my glasses on. My head's numb.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this issue, before we bring it back up to the board?
Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Last chance before we bring it back up. All right. I'll open it up to my colleagues for discussion. Who wants to start? Commissioner Vanderworth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the comments that have been made in front of the dais this morning. I think we do have a passionate issue associated with this in our community. I also know that there are people in the audience here that are opposed to a needle exchange program, but have chosen not to come up to the dais today. What I can say is, I think we have a whole lot more that we can do with regard to intervention, counseling, and prevention, which I believe are effective programs, before we do a public needle exchange in this community. And I'm also concerned that we have not had a sufficient public dialogue about this. There is, there is so much more we need to have a discussion about with regard to this, before we do a public needle exchange. And I would encourage our community to be, to get involved in that discussion, to include participation in the Board of Health meetings regarding this topic. Because the public policies and the public activities that we do in our community must reflect the interests of our citizens as well. This is important. So, I'm very interested in us having that public dialogue, so that we can make a well-informed decision. And it's my belief, to the point I made earlier, it's intervention, counseling, and prevention that are the effective components of these programs. And we need to have a dialogue about those as well, because we have issues in our community about drug use. And I think we need to do a lot more in this intervention, counseling, and prevention arena. That's where I think we will deliver more effective programs. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
So, thank you, Mr. President. So, a couple of things I've looked at. So, one of the, I did see the early presentation, early in the year, that was presented. And one of the things that was indicated, and they do go back to looking at statistics for Hep C and then HIV. So, there's a little bit more information out there on HIV, I believe. And, so one of the statistics that was shown to us, they detailed, well, look at this decrease in the HIV infectious rates per 100,000 in these cities and areas that have implemented the program. Well, when I looked further into the numbers, and I looked at online statistics, well, the data went back to 2008. So, these large decreases in the HIV infection rates of some of these counties or cities where they were very high, Denver and Boulder, I think were examples in the, in the survey, went back to 2008. Well, Boulder was the first syringe program in Colorado at 2011. So, they utilized data showing these great decreases back to 2008, before the syringe program was implemented. And then when you, I go to a separate website, where you can see, year by year, it goes back to 2011, it actually showed flatness, and I think Boulder actually went up one, one point in the infection rate. So, the numbers don't point out to this great, great decrease, as was presented to me, and I am a member of the Board of Health, several months ago. And so, that information was not, it was accurate in that there was a decrease. It was not accurate that it was the result of these syringe programs, and all of the decrease, almost all of it, was prior to the syringe program being implemented. El Paso County, we have been flat for that entire time. And in the same program, needle exchange numbers, statistics indicated El Paso was down, I think, 4 percent or something in those, back to 2008. So, in an area where we are not seeing this issue, and HIV, Hep C, those are all issues we are concerned about, but we are not the outliers in this. And so, to implement a program, I think, would be premature at this point. And when I looked at the actual data at some of these other areas used as examples, positive examples, I don't think the numbers actually played out, as was presented to me several months ago. So, that's why I am, I think we need to not implement this at this time, and that's why I'm going to be supporting our proclamation, our resolution.
Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you. Well, there are so many reasons why I proposed this resolution, declaring an opposition against the creation of a needleless, what we'd call a syringe exchange program in El Paso County. One of them being that this, if it is run like other needle programs within the state of Colorado, is not an exchange. This is a needle gifting. You get 25 to 30 or 50 needles and bring back one. This is not an exchange. This is not an even, like, I get one, I bring one back. You get one, you give one back, and you get many of them. And so many of them have been found, you know, around our communities, looking and talking to our sheriff, for our first responders. It does not decrease their exposure to needles by having 25 or 50 of them handed out, when only one is required to be returned. This is not a positive impact for our community. When I did meet with Mr. Mead in early February, the evidence that he gave to me compelled me to study further, to look at research, to look at data that was out there. And quite honestly, after looking at the New Haven Studies, the Tacoma Studies, a general report conclusions, looking at the California Report and results, it really, it made me think that we've got to move forward and not allow something like this to become utilized within our community. Simply because the outcomes do not show that it decreases needle usage in any regard, unless there are robust counseling programs. We heard this morning that people are trying to get into programs and cannot get into programs. So how does giving more needles out help them get into more counseling programs, when we can do those preventative majors, as my colleagues have mentioned this morning? To do a needle exchange program without increased treatment facilities just is ineffective. And quite honestly, I don't think we can afford any more treatment facilities here in El Paso County. You know, if, if our Department of Health decides that they would, their, their Board of Health would like to move forward with something like this, you know, quite honestly, it shows me that they have a lot of money in their budget, that they should be doing other things that we are statutorily required to do with our Department of Health program here in the state of Colorado. I would encourage people to come on Monday morning. We're having a public hearing on this. And it's going to be Monday, December the 4th, over at the Citizen Service Center, which is at 1675 West Garden of the Gods Road. It's in the El Paso County Citizen Service Center, 7:30 in the morning. It's going to be on the first floor. Usually, it's on the second floor. It's going to be on the first floor, in the Assessor's Classroom. We would love to have you come. We would love to have you give your input as to whether you think this would be positive or negative within our community. Also, there are many different locations that you can obtain the email addresses from those who are on the Board of Health. If you cannot be there personally, please email them. Email Commissioner Gonzalez and I. We are both representatives for our, liaisons for our Board, to the Board of Health. You can pick up my email address. It's on the website, peggylittleton@elpasoco.com. Commissioner Lojeros Gonzalez Jr. at elpasoco.com. Please email us. Let us know what your thoughts and feelings are on this, as to whether you think it would be a positive or negative within our community.
Commissioner Waller?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank Commissioners Littleton and Gonzalez for all the hard work they're doing on this issue. I know it's been contentious, to say the least. And so, we appreciate, you know, our colleagues picking up the effort that way, from a board's perspective. You know, I'll tell you, I get passionate about these issues, and I get frustrated. I get frustrated when we're accused of making decisions for anything other than the public's good in our mind. We don't make decisions just based on politics. We don't do that. We make decisions because they're right. I can tell you, and I will speak for all five of us up here, we all want to do what's right for our community. And we want to do what's right for our community every single time. That is what we are about on this Board of County Commissioners. And I think to reduce the argument to something being political is, quite frankly, disingenuous, and it's taken the easy way out. We, obviously, based on what we heard from some folks- We, obviously, based on what we heard from some folks who testified, based on what we heard from Commissioners Littleton and Gonzalez, at best, there's conflicting data out there in regards to whether this is the right sort of program moving forward. In my mind, as an old deputy district attorney prosecutor who prosecuted hundreds of criminal cases, by the way, most as a result of drug addiction in some way, I understand the issues, and I understand the problems associated with this. It seems to me, we are not in a place in El Paso County, Colorado, right now, where we need or should have a needle exchange program without some further discussion and debate. And it needs to be robust discussion and debate. When we hold public meetings, it needs to be widely broadcast to the entire public to give neighborhoods an opportunity to show up. It needs to be broadcast to all of the citizens of El Paso County, because this isn't about us. It's not about one of the five of us up here. It's about what's right for our community. So, in the future, I hope, as this debate goes forward, we can have a robust debate, and the debate can be held on the merits of whether this is the right kind of program to have, not on whether it's being driven by some political agenda.
Commissioner Vanderward?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all of my colleagues' comments on this, and I would encourage us to broaden that debate beyond just the needle exchange, and to my comments earlier, and to the comments that some of my colleagues have made as well, about other choices in dealing with these issues, about intervention, counseling, and prevention. Those are other programs that have been proven to be effective. So, we need to have a conversation about those as well, because in the design and the strategy to deal with these issues, we may find ourselves in a place that we need to figure out how to increase the robustness of those components, and that might be how we deal with this issue more effectively. So, I would encourage us to broaden that conversation and include these topics. Thank you.
Commissioner Littleton and then Gonzalez?
Thank you. And I concur with you. Unfortunately, it's not up to this board to make a decision whether we implement or do not implement. It is going to be the Board of Health, half of which are not elected officials, but are simply appointed within, people within our community. And that's where the rub is, and we've got to really make sure that we make our voices heard. Please, if you cannot be there Monday, email us. Let us know what you think, so we can put it on the record as what your decision is, or what your thoughts are regarding the needle exchange program. We have got to firmly convince at least five of the nine people who are on the Board of Health to, that this is not a good idea for El Paso County, that this is not a good idea for the citizens here in El Paso County.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Thank you. And I did want to go back to one point that Commissioner Littleton brought up, as did a lady earlier, about the needles themselves, with giving out more than you actually turn in, and she said that they're recovering all these needles. The Chieftain Newspaper in Pueblo actually did a report earlier this year, and they indicated from the middle of 2015 to the end of last year, that, based on the number of needles given out to those that had been returned, over 100,000 needles were unaccounted for. So, of the ones they gave out, over 100,000 were still unaccounted for. So, where do those wind up? Well, the Chieftain also had other articles indicating how they end up in parks and along the creeks, and this is an area where a lot of the kids end up playing, and some of the alleyways as well, but that they find these in the bunches oftentimes in these areas. And so, it is a concern that if this program were to start, that these needles would actually increase the number of needles that are out there and in our waterways and in our parks where others could be exposed to these, this threat. So, thank you.
Great. Any last minute comments? Well, you know, before I call the roll, I think it's important to note that it's rare that the board sends a formal position when we are like a liaison to a particular agency. We have a couple of representatives there, but when the board actually brings forward a resolution, I think that that should carry a tremendous amount of weight, and it addresses the level of concern that we have. So, with that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Littleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanderward?
Aye.
Commissioner Waller?
Aye.
The President votes aye. That passes unanimously. Okay. I'm going to recall item five. I see our district attorneys here.